All right, good evening. It's 6:00 PM, May 22nd. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local channel eight. If we could all rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next. Does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann, to the far left of me. And you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, thank you. I'll ask for public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. If for some reason I were to forget, feel free to raise your hand and I'll make sure you're being heard. So tonight, we have five, four regular members and one associate. Scott will be stepping down on two or three of them. You'll just tell us which one.
Press one.
All right, so, George, would you like to read the first continued hearing, which Scott will be stepping down, so it will be the four, three full-time members and George?
Seventy Alma Road. Fishers Patrick and Julie McNamara request a special permit under section 174-17.1 and section 174-33 of zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a new single-family structure on property located in R3 zoning district and the Pompanasset Overlay District map 117, parcel 161 Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Harry F. Selwitz and Mary Marilyn T. Selwitz, Irrevocable Trust, Family Trust, continued from March 13th, March 27th, April 24th, 2024.
So councilor, I just want to make it part of the record that there are only four sitting, right?
Understood.
You're okay with that?
I'm okay with that for this hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board.
George.
For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Patrick McNamara, who is the applicant for this raise and rebuild project at 70 Alma Road. Is that feedback bothering you?
It's okay.
On the microphone?
All right.
So again, this is a raise and replace of a pre-existing non-conforming structure in the, under 174-17.1. The house is located in the Pompanasset Overlay District. As this board is aware, the Pompanasset Overlay District requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, frontage of 60 feet, a front yard setback of 25 feet, rear and side yard setbacks of 15 feet. There's also, for this particular lot, there's also a 50-foot setback to wetland. So this lot is partially located within land subject to coastal storm flowage. So the total lot area of the four corners of the lot is 7,392 square feet. However, for our purposes tonight, the lot is only 3,039 square feet when you deduct the land subject to coastal storm flowage. So the lot, the lot area is non-conforming, the frontage is conforming. The lot coverage, given the deduction of the land subject to coastal storm flowage, lot coverage is non-conforming at 43.7%. If you include all the total lot area, the coverage as a percentage of the total lot area is 17.9%.
That's pre?
That's pre-existing. So as it stands right now with the existing structure, as a percentage of the total lot area, our coverage is 17.9%. And again, as the board knows, the Pompanasset Overlay District allows for a maximum lot coverage of 25%.
Nice one.
The structure itself has a few non-conformities. One is the lot coverage again at 43.7%. The front yard setback is 18.6 feet, which is non-conforming. The side yard setback to the north is 7.4 feet, which is a non-conformity. There is also a shed that is greater than 100 square feet, shown here, which is only 7.6 feet off of the lot line. So that would technically be a non-conforming condition as well. What the applicant is proposing is to, again, raise the existing structure and replace it with a new flood zone compliant structure. We will be eliminating the front yard setback, so that will become a conforming condition. We will be improving the north setback. So as I said, currently that non-conformity is 7.4 feet. That will be improved to 13.2 feet. The lot coverage will be increasing and will continue to be non-conforming. However, as a percentage of the total lot area, it would be 25%, so it would be conforming if you were able to take into account the total lot area. We are also removing the two sheds from the property. So that rear, that rear setback, which is non-conforming because of the shed, will become a conforming condition as it relates to the house. The existing house, the proposed house, are both conforming to the rear setback, but again, with the removal of the shed, you're eliminating another non-conformity. So as the board knows, under 174-17.1, there's three criteria that we must show for this board to approve these projects. One is that there's sufficient parking. Residential zones require two parking spaces. There's a large enough driveway shown in the corner there to support two cars, that there are no new non-conformities being created. We are not creating any new non-conformities. So the non-conformities, no new non-conformities. And the last piece of the puzzle is, is this project proposal going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood that currently exists? So I believe that this project will not be substantially more detrimental for the following reasons, which I've also articulated on page five of my narrative, which I provided to this board. So this house, the existing house was built in the 1950s. It is not building code compliant. The new structure will be building code compliant. The new, the existing structure is not flood zone compliant, and the new structure will be flood zone compliant. Except for the lot coverage, we will not be intensifying any of the existing non-conformities. So again, the front yard setback will become conforming, the side yard setback, which is non-conforming, will be improving, and the sheds are being removed, eliminating those non-conformities. No new non-conformities are being created. There will be an IA system being installed as part of this project, so that is obviously a better situation than what currently exists. The existing front yard is being eliminated, the existing norally side yard is being improved, the two sheds are being removed, dry wells are being proposed on this project to contain stormwater on-site. I think always important to this board, this project was approved by the Conservation Commission at its last meeting. I've also noted something that I haven't noted before, but I think the Board of Health also noted, this is a two-bedroom house, it will remain a two-bedroom house. So there will be no increase in the number of bedrooms from what, from what exists. The coverage as a percentage of the total lot area will be at 25%, which would, you know, technically, if we were going by the old way, would be a conforming condition. So I think it's important to know that we're not exceeding, you know, what would normally be allowed by this board or had been allowed in the past. And I would suggest that this project is consistent with other development in this neighborhood. As always, as part of my presentation, I provided the board with some photos of surrounding homes. I would specifically point towards 78 Alma Road, which is only two houses down, which is certainly, you know, a larger structure, you know, consistent with what we are proposing. There are also some houses on, the house right behind us, on bluff, is certainly, you know, unfortunately, I had to take my photo through the trees, but can certainly be seen as a, you know, certainly consistent with the size and scope of this project. Down Beers Road, Wilson's Grove, G Place, you know, we certainly see redevelopment that's consistent with what we're being, what's being proposed tonight. So, you know, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
I'd like to get letters from town agencies read, but real quick, I think this is a very important question. Zoning table, you're depicting front yard setback required 25 feet?
Yes.
You're showing 25 foot six proposed. That is correct, you're creating a new non-conformity.
No, 25.6.
He's making it better.
By six inches.
He's making it better.
Oh, you're right. So why, so at 18.6?
It's non-conforming, and we're going--
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the opposite way.
Right. So we have a non-conforming condition right now at 18.6, and we're going to--
My mistake. It's dyslexia.
No, that's okay.
George, could you read anything into the record that has notified the board?
Yes.
Meaning town agencies, et cetera?
Yes. Board of health comments received, May 17, 2024, 70 Alma Road. Board of health facility is in the Zone 2 and is indeed restricted to two bedrooms, previously permitted by the Board of Health. Subject design plan for proposed new IA systems will be reviewed upon submission by the Board of Health. Road inspection required with abatement if necessary. Conservation comments received, 5/16, 2024, 70 Alma Road. This project was approved by the Conservation Committee on May 9th public meeting. The project meets the applicable performance standards under CH 172 Regulation 25 and subject to duration and coastal flowage for a landlocked lot within an AE flood zone. New home is compliant with building code in the flood zone. Improved stormwater runoff capture and overall reduction of previous services to the, on the property. No other wetlands within 150 feet, parentheses, wetland buffer loan, wetland buffer zone, and a parentheses, of the project site. Mission required that the planting of three to five, three to four native trees as mitigation for the minor expansion of the home footprint. Property owner will work with CONCOM staff to determine appropriate tree species and location.
That extent of all the letters? I know we don't have anything from Evan.
That's it, I think. I don't see any letters from--
Okay. So why don't we go to board questions? Sharon, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Jonathan?
Not a thing, looks good.
George?
No, looks good.
All right, so why don't we go, David?
I have just one point. I disagree with one point, where the shed is non-conforming to the side setback. I don't think it has much to do with this issue, but that is a conform, the one that's to the side setback is 97 square feet, which is allowed to have a five-foot setback, and that's a conforming shed.
Right. What I was talking about is this one. This one's only seven feet off the back.
Understood.
But that's the only one I was talking--
But it does, it does mention, and I think you did mention, I know you mentioned that the side setback is because of, that was a conforming, that side setback is conforming.
Right.
Not a major deal, but I'm starting to see this more and more, and I just want to point that out.
Right. And I would just, I would just note that the, both sheds are being removed, but if you look at the existing structure to this side yard, it's 25 feet, and the proposed structure is 15 feet, 15.5, so it's not, it's going to be conforming irrespective of the shed issue.
Understood, understood.
Okay. Anyone in the audience like to discuss or point out any issues or concerns with this application? Seeing none.
Ask anyone?
Say again?
What address anyone--
We are on 70 Alma Road. You all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go back. Any board questions?
Nope.
So just to go over this again, there's no new non-conformities being created.
That is correct.
There are some non-conformities that are being reduced, if not eliminated.
That's correct.
Okay. Like to have a motion then to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, please. All is a favor.
Aye.
It's closed. All right. That being said, I'd like to get a motion in reference to the application. George?
70 Alma Road. Fishers Patrick and Julie McNamara request a special permit under section 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a single-family structure on property located in R3 zoning district and the Pompanasset Overlay District map 117, parcel 161 Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Harry S., Harry F. Selwitz and Marilyn T. Selwitz, Irrevocable Family Trust, with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets the conditions of a special permit under Mass Law 40A Section 9. Number two, site plan prepared for Patrick and Julie McNamara, Project 70 Alma Road, Mashpee, Mass. Sheet one, sheet number one of one, date, March 24th, 2024, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Mark Dibb and Matthew C. Costa. Number three, building plans, McNamara residence 70 Alma Road, sheet number one, first floor plan, second floor plan, sheet number two, front elevation, right elevation, sheet number three, rear elevation, left side elevation. Number four, conditions on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and the Conservation Department comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the town plan as review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter 175 of the town bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. Number seven, the board finds under section 174-17.1 and section 174-33 that the proposed project is not, is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use of either the town or the neighborhood, that there are sufficient parking and there are no new, new, new non-conformities being created.
I'll second.
All is a favor.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sharon, could you read the next, well, not yet.
We're not ready.
Sorry, I apologize. I see a long agenda, so I'm trying to push it along. We're going to be here after midnight.
That will be fine. I started to sign in Billy's line, but it's not here, so it doesn't matter. So Christine's house, Cass's house. George? Sharon? April 1? April 1? Yep. That's going that way.
No, you need to sign--
Or that's going this way. This is the new stop. Yeah, well, see, I'm usually sitting there to sign.
Yeah, you need to sign it.
Yeah. He's pushing it back to-- 27. Yeah. There's that one. There's that one. There's that one. All right, Sharon, would you like to read? Let's knock on the door. We're getting Scott back in here.
That's right.
Like him to participate?
Who's going to stop?
Never.
I saved the day.
He did, he saved the day.
Well, it means I have to move this paper.
All right. 425 Monima Squire Road. Owners Mark H. and Lisa White request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a new single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district map 124, parcel 55 Mashpee, Mass, continued from March 13th, March 27th, April 24th, 2024.
Counselor?
How are you tonight, member of the board?
Great.
Again, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Mr. White. I have, I requested a continuance of this. I had originally asked for June 26th, but I understand that you may be canceling that meeting. So if that is the case, then I would ask for July 10th. This project was denied by the Conservation Commission, but it is my understanding that it may go back to CONCOM prior to the next ZBA meeting. So I'm hopeful that if that does happen, it gets approved, that I can bring a project, would be a raise and replace, with some changes that this board could review on July 10th.
I have a question, Mary Ann. Enough time?
Yes, yes, because--
Do we need to sign anything?
Right. You'll sign a form.
But I also have a question.
Yes.
Why wouldn't you withdraw? I mean, you're, you're banking on the fact you're going to refile with Conservation, you're going to get approval from Conservation, you're going to go into extensions again, presumably.
Yes. So I would--
I just don't want to go down that road. It makes a lot of work for Mary Ann.
I would, I guess I would just ask for one bite at the apple if, you know, because if, if they don't, then I would withdraw it, but I think that, you know, potentially this could come back before this board on July 10th.
When was the first time you went to Conservation on this?
Oh, I couldn't even tell you. I think it's been going--
January?
Yeah, probably.
Then, you know, I kind of agree with Ron on this.
It just saves my client--
It's almost June.
But no, it's not my client's fault that it's dragged on through--
And I totally get that. It's just, I, you know, it's traumatic to say the least in reference to Mary Ann trying to keep up with these extensions. As you saw Jonathan's first question, do we have enough time?
Right.
I mean, I just, there's no reason for us to be under a time scenario when we are trying, I mean, how many things are on agenda tonight? We're going to push them, we're going to get them done, if we're here at midnight, right? I get it. And so, that being said, I just think it's in the best interest of everybody to withdraw. But you, I mean, I can't make you do that. That certainly is your decision, but--
I mean, I don't, I will take the, you know, guidance of the board. I'm not here, I'm not here to argue with you on those types of things. You know, I prefer to at least get it to July 10th. It just saves my clients some, you know, the, it's a lot of work on my clients' end to, you know, refile new plans, pay a new filing fee.
Yeah, but you're going to be doing that anyway. If you go to Conservation, you change your plan, as you just said, you're changing your plans.
You have to change your plan.
I'm not, I can't, I'm sorry, I'm just not going there with that one.
Right.
My point is this, I think it's imperative for this board to do what we can for our employees, and I think it's important that this should be withdrawn.
Okay. If that were the case, then I would ask the board to allow me to withdraw the application without prejudice.
I would like to hear a motion in reference to the acceptance of that request, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Attorney Corain's withdrawal of 425 Monima Squire Road.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Have a second? All is a favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, you have like hot dogs or hamburgers?
I'm thinking about going across the street to the convenience. I should have something. But I'm here.
I know, I got it.
You can't go yet.
See, we're always trying to force me out. I was trying to, doesn't want to call me back in. He doesn't want to force me out.
Listen, I, you know, got a lot to do here tonight.
Under me.
That's the one?
Under me.
Under you.
Chris gets to be on the talk.
Can I just do ditto's? One, two, two.
Here you go, sir. Does he have to sign it too?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's only five.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, I can spread out my papers.
You get to have those, you get to spread out.
Okay. Sharon, would you please read 14 Capstan?
14 Capstan Circle. Owners Robert P. McDonald Jr. and Tracy A. McDonald request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming three-bedroom single-family dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district map 111, parcel 101 Mashpee, Mass, continued from March 13th, March 27th, and April 24th, 2024.
Good evening. Again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Robert and Tracy A. McDonald, owners of property at 14 Capstan Circle. This is very similar to the project that we just discussed at 70 Alma, except for the fact that this project is not within the Pompanasset Overlay District. It is the R3 zoning district. So it has lot area requirements of 40,000 square feet, frontage requirement of 150 feet, front yard setback of 40 feet, rear and side yard setbacks of 15 feet, maximum lot coverage of 20, of 20%. And as always, generally to any zoning district, there is a 50-foot setback to wetland. So the total land area of this lot, this lot is located on Spoon Drift Cove, for those of you familiar with New Seaberry, so right on the water. So the total lot area, if you take, again, the four corners of the lot, is 14,533 square feet. However, this lot, like the one on 70 Alma, is partially within land subject to coastal storm flowage, which for zoning purposes reduces our lot area to 3,222 square feet. So we have a lot that is non-conforming as to area as well as to frontage. The structure itself is non-conforming in a couple of areas. One would be lot coverage. The existing lot coverage with the, with the exclusion of the land subject to coastal flowage is 70.8%. However, I would note that the coverage of structures as a percentage of the total lot area is only 15.7%. So again, if you were able to take the whole lot, the lot coverage is, the coverage is 15.7%. The southerly side yard setback is 12 feet, which is a non-conforming condition, and we are within 50 feet of the, and subject to coastal storm flowage. So we are non-conforming as to lot coverage, non-conforming as to the southerly side setback, and non-conforming as to the setback to wetland. So what we are proposing today is to raise and rebuild a, the existing non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming structure, and we are going to build a new structure. That new structure will be building code compliant where the existing one is not. The new structure will be flood zone compliant where the existing structure is not. We are not creating any new non-conformities, other than the lot coverage, because the house is going to get bigger. Other than that, there is no intensification of any existing non-conformity. So we, the existing non-conformity of 12 feet will stay at 12 feet. We're not going to make that any worse than what it is today. The, an IA system is being proposed as part of this project. It's a three-bedroom existing, it's a three-bedroom proposed, so there is no increase in the number of bedrooms. There are dry wells being proposed, so the stormwater management on-site. The, important, the Conservation Commission has approved this project as part of that, and you'll see in green, is there a substantial mitigation being proposed by the water as part of this proposal. The, the coverage as a percentage of the total area is 19.9%, which is under 20%. And if you look around the houses on Spoon Drift Cove, which I've given you those photographs of, there are houses on Waiting Place, and even houses on Capstan that are of a similar size and scope, so I would suggest to this board that there, it is consistent with other redevelopment in the neighborhood, it would not constitute a condition which is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. We do have sufficient parking. Again, residential zones only require two parking spaces, there's a driveway for that. So sufficient parking, no new non-conformities, and, you know, given the new building, building code compliant, flood zone compliant, no new non-conformities, no intensification of the side yard, IA septic, conservation approval, mitigation, dry wells, no increase in bedrooms, the overall coverage is less than 20% as a percentage of total lot area, and, you know, similar in size and scope of the other houses in and around the area, I would suggest to this board that we are not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists.
Okay. George, would you like to read letters from town agencies, please, into the record?
Yes. Conservation Department comments, 14 Capstan Circle. Commission approved this project at their May 9th, 2024 public meeting, subject to the following conditions. Number one, submission of a signed three-year mitigation planting, monitoring, and maintenance contract between the property owner and a qualified landscape professional. Two, all patio areas must be comprised of previous material.
pre-existing non-conforming structure, and we are going to build a new structure. That new structure will be building code compliant where the existing one is not. The new structure will be flood zone compliant where the existing structure is not. We are not creating any new non-conformities, other than the lot coverage, 'cause the house is gonna get bigger. Other than that, there is no intensification of any existing non-conformity. So we, the existing non-conformity of 12 feet will stay at 12 feet. We're not gonna make that any worse than what it is today. Um, the, an IA system is being proposed as part of this project. Uh, it's a three-bedroom existing, it's a three-bedroom proposed, so there is no, um, increase in the number of bedrooms. Um, there are drywells being proposed, so the stormwater management on site. The, uh, important, the Conservation Commission has approved this project. As part of that, and you'll see in green, is there a substantial mitigation being proposed by the water as part of this proposal. The, the coverage as a percentage of the total area is 19.9 percent, which is under 20 percent. And if you look around the houses on Spoon Drift Cove, which I've given you those photographs of, uh, there are houses on Waiting Place, um, and even a house on Capstan that are of a similar size and scope, so I would suggest to this board that, um, there, it is consistent with other redevelopment in the neighborhood. It would not constitute a condition which is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, we do have sufficient parking. Again, residential zones only require two parking spaces, there's a driveway for that. So sufficient parking, no new non-conformities, and, you know, given the new building, building code compliant, flood zone compliant, no new non-conformities, no intensification of the side yard, IA septic, conservation approval, mitigation, drywells, no increase in bedrooms, uh, the overall coverage is less than 20 percent as a percentage of total lot area, and, you know, similar in size and scope of the other houses in and around the area, I would suggest to this board that we are not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists.
Okay, George, would you like to read letters from town agencies, please, into the record?
Yes. For Conservation Department comments, 14 Capstan Circle. Commission approved this project at their May 9th, 2024 public meeting, subject to the following conditions. Number one, submission of a signed three-year mitigation planting, monitoring, and maintenance contract between the property owner and a qualified landscape professional. Two, all patio areas must be comp, comprised of previous material. Sorry. Just sit on the Conservation. So Board of Health, 14 Capstan Circle. Board of Health attaches a septic plan for a three-bedroom. Septic plans must be submitted to the Health Department for review before a building permit will be approved, approval.
I don't think there's any, uh, a but, letters out there.
I didn't see any earlier today.
That was it.
Is that the extent of letters, you're the best general?
As far as I can see.
All right, thank you, George. Um, board questions?
Uh, the only issue I have is that the shed that's going to be removed, a part of it is on somebody else's property. So I know you say you're going to remove it, but I'd like that in the motion that it is removed, so you cannot back out of that at the last minute.
They put it on the plan to be removed, they, if you make a condition, it will be removed.
Exactly. So the engineer's not here?
No, no, he's not.
He designs these roof drainage systems with overflow pipes. He under, he possibly, possibly underdesigns a system, and then he puts an overflow pipe. And so, in theory, if in fact he's relying on the overflow pipe, why does he have a leaching system? When in fact, 90 percent of the time, it's gonna come out the overflow pipe. You see my point?
I see your point.
I mean, I'm, I'm led to believe that's why the overflow pipe is there, because he's underdesigned the system. I mean, yeah.
I wish I could answer that question. As I said, I'm not the engineer.
And frankly, I'm tired of doing calculations. Engineering calculations, I don't get paid enough.
Right. I mean, I could certainly recommend to them going forward that, uh...
Who in the town is supposed to look at this?
I don't think the town, the town doesn't have an engineer that's looking at it, and the DPW, actually, is not an engineer, although she does give great comments in reference to drainage.
So we're only listening to one side of the story?
We're listening to the applicant, and the only one that's looked at this from an engineering standpoint would be.
You.
No, not me. I'm not an engineer. But I can tell you, I, there's certainly a hole there, right? Because I don't know if I would want this to go to peer review. I don't think it probably would need to go to peer review, per se, but somebody's gotta look at these calculations, because if in fact, every single time you have an event, let's say it's a 10-year storm event, and it's coming out the overflow pipe, then if, why put drainage in? We talk about, and I don't think Conservation, let me ask you a question, I think. This may make some, this may put this to bed, but I think the answer is not gonna put it to bed. Did Conservation question, did you attend Conservation?
I did not attend Conservation. So, sorry, I can't, I did not. But I think on, if I remember the comments from Alma, they did mention, I thought they mentioned the stormwater management drywells, so I don't know, it doesn't sound like they did on this one, but it, I, I believe it's part of their...
I'm just wondering to what level Conservation looked at this drywell and the retention of water on the site, and how did they deal with it? Was it questioned? Was the questions put to bed or answered and, and then satisfied?
It was approved.
I get it, but I'm not so sure.
I'm not sure they looked at it.
They may not. I mean, when you're looking at these projects, you know, it's in the flood zone, I think Conservation's focusing on those issues.
Right.
They're focusing on flood zone, they're focused on mitigation.
Here's where I'm trying not to go. You get this piece of property, you increase the use of that property with a bigger dwelling, and all of a sudden, there's more impervious material, which means roof line off and all the rest, and now we create water issues, and all of a sudden, a butters are in, in front of this board saying, "What are you doing to us? I don't wanna be there."
Right. The only thing I would know from Conservation's notes is that they did make a, so stormwater must have been somewhat reviewed, because they did make a specific note about the pavers being impervious, about being pervious.
Well, yeah, but you get the roof lines all impervious, right? Hello?
So I, I guess, I, I guess I could, you know, you know, there's one or two ways, I guess, to, for the board could address it. One, they could request that they could add another drywell, or, or increase...
I think the only way to deal with this is make it contingent upon somebody reviewing this. I don't wanna be the guy, I did it on application two, three, six months ago. I don't wanna do them anymore.
Right.
I mean, I don't wanna review someone's drainage calculations. It takes time, and I don't have time.
And I'm, my concern from the peer review standpoint is, I think...
I'm not, I don't, I don't wanna go down the rabbit hole of houses, although there could be a house or houses that, that I would ask to be peer reviewed. I don't see this as a peer review issue.
Right.
I'm trying to, though, to satisfy my concerns and keep it out of peer review, but yet satisfy my concerns. How do we do that?
Um, would I, so, I, before, I guess before a building permit is issued, I could have the engineer submit a letter with calculations and saying that it's sufficient for...
Why don't you have him submit calculations, have him say that it's adequate for what storm? Hopefully, it's NOAA, not DEP standards. You can write that down, please. I'm hoping that he's using NOAA standards, not DEP standards, and for what storm, velocity stone, storm, I'd like to know. And have him submit his calculations, and if in my brain, if, David, if you wanna run them by me, I have no problem looking at them at the building permit application. If I have to, I'll run some calculations. I don't want to, because then I'm, it's not my thing. I'm not an engineer.
No, absolutely, I understand, and I think I'm certainly more than amenable to that type of condition, and I will, uh...
I mean, I, before this meeting, I looked at special permit requirements, I read them again, I continue to read them before every meeting, and I just, one of them specifically is water, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and so, and you look at the, the orange areas compared to this area, you sit there and say, wow, that's a lot of impervious material, or so, uh, surface.
But I, and I, and I guess one of the other things I would say, and I, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, and I certainly am amenable to the condition as you propose it, you know, the existing conditions show no dry, have no, no stormwater man.
I get it, but so, but here's where I'm at as a person that's sitting here giving my time and effort.
Right.
All of a sudden, this board were, if the board were to approve this application, and then all of a sudden, we have some type of water issue out there, it's because the approval of the application, because they hadn't had the water problem, let's say, before.
Right.
Or it's, it's, it's increased in its, um, velo-, in its problems.
Right.
I don't think that's, I don't think this board is protecting the interest of our community if that happens.
Well, again, I'm, I'm amenable, I'm certainly amenable to the condition that the engineer provide additional calculations before a building permit.
In a certification that's gonna handle a storm, NOAA or DEP calc's, based on those calc's, and to what velocity storm, and submit the calculations. And if I have to, I can put them into, see if he, I don't wanna get it.
And I, and, you know, I guess I would, if the board wanted to enhance that condition, you know, could reserve the right to require the applicant to, you know, increase the capacity if they...
Well, I, I think, I think part of that has to state that if it doesn't satisfy the board's concerns, and maybe what I do is submit it to one of, give it to one of my engineers or something, I don't know, I'll have to figure that out, but I just don't think it's right for this board to not question that scenario.
And I will certainly...
I mean, there, it just doesn't make sense to me.
And I will certainly, uh...
Does the board understa...
Understand, understand.
If you look at the law, I mean, there's an overflow pipe there. That just says to me that, that, you know, that the design engineer's sitting there saying, my God, in a, in a, in a certain event, and I get it, if it's a 100-year event and 101-year, I get that, but it could be a 10-year event, all of a sudden, it's using the overflow pipe. And that means in a 10-year event, all of a sudden, you could be, Capstan Circle could be underwater.
Right.
It's not right.
Understood. And I will certainly, uh, I don't know what the right word is, but advise the engineers to be a little bit more proactive about the information.
'Cause I don't want to, as chair of this board, start instituting peer review for single-family homes.
Understood.
Constantly.
Right, for drywells especially.
And I'm not gonna be an engineer.
Right.
So, George, if you were to make a motion, I would recommend that motion to include, prior to the issuance of a building permit, that the design engineer submit, um, design calculations for his, um, roof drainage, including the method that he's using, whether it be DEP or NOAA.
Standards.
Standards, yes. And to what velocity storm? We will look into those, that, that submittal, and if it doesn't meet minimum standards for our opinion, he'll have to redesign. I know that's kinda lumpy, George.
Did you write all that down?
I didn't get all of it.
Well, I think they're, they're certainly on record and in the minutes that could be...
Yeah, I mean, listen, it's the right thing to do, in my opinion.
As I say, I'm...
The right thing to do.
I have no problem with that condition.
Question is, what is the fix for next time?
Well, the fix for next time, I'm hoping engineers will come in here, and, you know, you're gonna understand, there's a, there's a history here, and I'm not gonna waste the time of this board, but I checked calculations once, and those, they were not correct. You know that.
I will...
And so that, then I sit there and say, ooh, this is, this concerns.
I mean, it's easy for me to review zoning tables and be able to...
I get it.
Say, hey, you gotta fix this, you gotta fix that. I don't know anything about calc's, but I will certainly impress upon my consulting engineers to, that this is gonna be a question that comes up on all projects.
Without a doubt, and it's our job, one of our primary jobs, to protect the people of this community, and that, that has to be done.
And Cape and Islands comes here all the time.
I think it's gonna, it's gonna become more and more often, because we don't have, I don't wanna go down the peer review if I don't have to. We don't have an engineer sitting in this board, we don't have an engineer to go to, so let's just, we'll move this along. So that's it. Um, all right, next issue. Um, let's see, David, do you have anything?
Same thing with the first, um, thing, the sheds, and I'm gonna expand on what Jonathan said, but, um, the 6.8 shed again is a conforming shed. And then, and then the, the other shed there is ignored, it, that should be a zero, should be a zero setback. The 12, the house, again, it does not, um, change the, the, the non-conformity, but it's kinda creating a non-conformity that shouldn't be there. Sheds that are under 200 square feet, uh, should be, be able to be moved, so I'm reluctant to call these, um, existing non-conformities, or, you know, making this setback on that. Especially with these ones, they are not non-conforming, 'cause they're smaller than 200 square feet, smaller than 120 square feet, so the setback is five feet. This is, um, again, I, I've been seeing more and more of this, and I think it's kinda taken a liberty.
Yeah, I mean, I think for this project, as you noted, though, you know, again, this shed is over the line, it, it...
Correct, but it's not, it's not, if you're gonna mention one shed, you don't mention the other one, so...
But we're not using, like, I would just note, we're not using this shed as the non-conformity. This side is 12. It's, the house is already non-conforming. And this side, we're, this is being moved anyways.
Again, yeah, well, you can...
We're not even treating this as a non-conformity, it's a conforming, we're saying the house is...
It is, again, it does, I don't think it's, um, I don't know, it's just something that I think is incorrect.
Okay.
So just for clarity, David, so if there were a shed on here that was two feet to the lot line, so that means, um, do you consider that a pre-existing non-conformity?
No, it's, if it's, if it's, it depends, if it's a, if it's a garage, if it's a permanent structure, sheds aren't considered permanent.
Right.
They are movable structures, so you could, you could settle that by moving it.
So it really wouldn't be considered a pre-existing non-conformity?
Um, in, in, in most cases. Some of these, some of these are permanent structures, so it, it may...
I got you. Just, just from my own...
We have to take, yeah, you know, you have to take judgment on each case, but these ones here, that, it seems like, you know, they get, you know, they're not non-conforming, and they're making them non-conforming, which is a little troubling for me.
Well, I'm not, you, I'm not, I just wanna be clear, I'm not utilizing the distances from the sheds to create a non-conformity or to represent to this board that there is a non-conformity again. The house is 12 feet, that's my non-conformity, and I...
Understood.
And then this, this house is, our, this house is over 20 feet.
This shed, it may be non-conforming, but this side yard is gonna stake, it's over 15 feet, it's gonna be conforming.
I'm just asking for clarity, inclusive of other applicants.
Sure.
So they understand.
I don't think that, again, I don't think they're creating any new non-conformities. I don't think it, it matters to the judgment of this board of what they have to consider.
Do you concur that you are not creating any new non-conformities?
Yes, yes, I am not creating any.
All right, that being said, anyone in the audience have any input or questions in reference to this application, please? Okay, seeing.
I have another question.
Okay, Jonathan?
So, um, tell me about the spa. What is it?
There's a spa existing on site, and looks like they're relocating it, or it may be staying there, but there's a spa there, there's a spa to be there, I don't, I'm not a...
I'm looking at the blue spa, uh, proposed. So it's a hot tub or what?
I, I don't know specifically, I, I can only guess it's probably a spa, jacuzzi, hot tub type.
Okay, so they drain it in the winter?
I have no idea. I don't know.
Did Conservation ask this question?
He didn't go to Conservation.
I didn't go to Conservation, but they approved the project.
We have no engineers, and he didn't go to Conservation.
But they, they approved the project with the spa.
So the question is, are they dumping the water into the ocean?
Oh, I, I certainly hope not. If you wanna put a condition on it that says, don't dump the water in the ocean, you can put that condition out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's fine.
George, you got that?
Don't dump the water in the ocean.
Don't put it into Spoon Drift Cove.
Pull up the straw.
Yep.
And get rid of it.
But I would say that, you know, not that it really matters, but, I mean, there are houses around Spoon Drift that have pools, that have, you know, other things, but, but if, besides, if the board wants to put a condition to, if they, if they drain it, they gotta move the water off-site, can't be drained on-site.
But I believe the spa is in the same spot in both the original.
It is, it is pretty close.
I think it's just a question...
The only question is, what do they do with the water?
Right.
You know, it's got chlorine in it, all the rest of it.
A lot of stuff in it, yeah, right.
So again, if the board wants the condition on not draining it into the Spoon Drift Cove, then, then find a better...
Move it off property.
David, have you looked at these plans?
The home, the house plans?
Yes.
I don't remember, I don't think I have.
No. My only concern with Scott not here, I'm not looking at them, because I'm running a meeting, so, um, did you look at it?
Wouldn't know what to look at.
I mean, it's been continued.
Ah, you got it.
It's been continued.
I know what to look at, I just, I can't...
It's been continued three times.
Yeah, I got it.
If I did, I looked at them two months ago.
And I can't run the meeting and question drainage and then look at plans?
Well, I know that, um, you know, obviously Board of Health looked at the bedrooms and the supply, and then, you know, this is a, you know, a Tim Luff project, so...
Why don't we just spend a minute, just to...
He knows how to calculate height.
Look at the open.
Yeah, let's just, we're gonna spend a couple, just a minute here, just...
Oh, I think I have them, I don't need to look at them, they're gonna look at them.
So... You know, these, these plans are prepared by Tim Luff, who's been before this board.
Yeah.
He shows the height being measured from average, average grade.
Which is good.
35 is the maximum height, he shows that on the plan.
So David, correct me if I'm wrong, is that what you'd pick up at the time of the application building permit anyway? So, other than from a standpoint of aesthetics, et cetera, et cetera, we're pretty much from a board standpoint protected by you?
I would say so.
'Cause they gotta get by you with the permission.
I would say so, yeah. I mean, I make sure they're building code compliant, and I still make sure they...
Bedroom count, all that stuff.
Still make sure that they, they, um, comply to all zoning issues as well. Still make sure that they, they comply to all zoning issues as well.
I think the biggest issue for this board from a zoning perspective is obviously the height is, is in your table, so we always show that we're under the 35 feet in the R3.
I do not make sure the, you know, complying to the health requirements or the conservation.
Well, because it's, um-
Second floor.
Is it, it's unfinished?
Is that a window?
Yes, but it's unfinished.
Right at the moment.
Well, so David?
Yeah.
Mr. Furbish has a question. Do you wanna say it, or do you want me to say?
No, I just, I was looking for an explanation on, let's see, it's A3, second floor plan, with this unfinished storage, that it looks like it's bigger than any bedroom. It looks, appears to have a window, and yet, I don't-
Has a door, so-
Yeah, it has a door, why is it not considered a bedroom? I'm looking at the opening, it looks small, where the loft has got a big opening.
It's unfinished.
It is now, but-
We, we send it, during the permit process, again, I told you, I do the zoning, I do make sure I'm, I'm in charge of the zoning, I am in charge of the building codes. And you can have as many bedrooms according to the building code. This is reviewed by the health department, it is under their peer review, I send it to them, they approve it or not.
So it's been approved by Board of Health, so it's not within our purview, I, I guess from-
It will be, it will be sent to them during the permit process.
My, my statement of that-
It will be sent to Conservation.
I don't think we can protect from-
It will be sent to the fire department for, for review.
I don't think we can protect from unfinished, there's a statement on the plan that says unfinished, to what level, I don't know how we can protect.
It's not a zoning issue.
There's just no way, I don't-
Yeah, I guess-
I get it.
It's kinda like what Ron pointed out with the overflow pipe. It's not up to us, but it's an unanswered question.
Well, again, we, these plans go through Board of Health from the outset, so Zach reviews these, and he'll, and these, these exact plans he reviews and gives his comments on. He says it's a three-bedroom, and I know Zach's given comments before, it's, you know, he doesn't necessarily look at the, the threshold width and things like that, but again, you know, he reviews these plans.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, I think we have to leave that up to the zoning enforcement officer and the other departments in this community, in this town hall, so, I get it. You all set with that?
Yep.
Okay, um, so I'd like to get a motion, well, do you understand this, uh, let's just discuss a motion if it were asked to be made.
Do you wanna close public hearing?
I already went out, did I need to go to the audience? I thought I went to the audience, did I? I went to the audience, it's on my checklist, done.
Do we have-
See? It doesn't lie.
Good.
Do you wanna close public-
Well, not yet, 'cause I, what I wanna do is discuss the, the actual motion, because I wanna make sure it makes sense to everybody here. So George, could you read to me what the motion would be in reference to those two topics that we discussed? They're outside the normal, the motion, please.
Uh, number eight would be shed located on property will be removed. And then, Cape and Island, number nine, Cape and Islands, to provide a calculation using known standards as to the overflow pipe resulting from storm-related impact.
You know what, you can help him.
Yeah, why don't I do this? If you were asked to make a motion, which I presume you're going to, I will, I will help you with the motion, if that's okay with you. Good, that'd be fun. All right, so can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to close the public-
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, all right, carries. All right, so George, would you like to make a motion in reference to this application, please?
14 Capson Circle, owners Robert P. McDonald Jr. and Tracy A. McDonald, request a special permit under 174, section 174-17.1 and section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom, single-family dwelling on a property located in an R3 zoning district, map 111, parcel 101, Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass. general law 40A, section 9. Number two, site plan prepared by four, Robert P. and Tracy A. McDonald, project 14 Capson Circle, Mashpee, Mass., prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, sheet number one, of one, date December 4, 2023, revised 4/29/24. Revised mitigation location, MOD roof drywell changed patio to previous patio stamped and signed by Matthew C. Costa. Number three, building plans prepared for McDonald Residence, 14 Capson Circle, prepared by Architect Associates A-2, first floor plan A-3, second floor plan A-4, elevations A-5, elevations. Number four, condition on all town departments comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the town plan as review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter 175 of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. Number seven, the board finds under section 174-17.1 and section 174-33 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or the use to either the town or the neighborhood, that there is sufficient parking and that there are no new conformities being created. Number 10, number eight, shed located on a property today will be removed. Nine.
Applicant to, applicant's engineer to submit prior to the issuance of a billment to the building inspector, design criteria for the NDS pro-flow well and onsite drainage calculations. In that submittal, the design engineer will state whether he's using DEP or NOAA standards and to what event, whether it be 20-year, 50-year, 100-year, the design is done to, and it'll include all his calculations. And he will certify as to the event that he is designed to. David, you can-
And to be reviewed by David and-
Yeah, oh yeah, to be reviewed by David and/or this board in conjunction with, and if it doesn't meet the minimum standards of this board's criteria, they may, they may have to be upgraded. Okay?
Absolutely.
Second.
Is that okay with you, David?
Yep.
Anymore? You just have the spa?
Oh, yeah, the spa, he did not, did you deal with the spa?
I didn't deal with the spa. Number 10, spa water to remove environmentally.
Second.
What did you just say about the spa? I didn't get that.
Spa water to remove, to remove-
I have a se, I have a second, all in favor?
All right. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna turn and how to deal with that, 'cause Mary Ann told me, the new town, in the new description, they review all plans, most of them that get bachelor's have dual major in urban and environmental. Got, got the problem solved.
Ah, environmental, so they're gonna look at drainage calculations?
Well, they'll be able to at least.
Trust me.
Well, you won't, you won't, well, you have the, the plan, you know, then if they need it-
I get it, I totally understand, but-
I'm not telling them to do the parcel properties, but-
What did you say? I was talking to George.
But you can get a dual cert, uh, pre-major in planning.
Oh, I get it, it's just-
And then they would be at least knowledgeable, I'm not saying they're gonna-
All right, knock on the door for Scott.
Get on, dual major, you gonna be on the selection committee?
No, I'm not, I have nothing to do with it whatsoever. I'm innocent.
You're innocent.
Hmm?
All my daughter does is look at building plans, all-
All right, I'm not doing a racist thing.
That's all she does is read building plans.
Okay.
And I know that's not what Evan does.
Sleeping alone, Scott?
So, she is the building inspector, only is dealing with the structural stuff. So, yeah. So the, and where my daughter works, the town pla, the planner does all setbacks, the, the building inspector only does structural stuff.
Where's that?
West Palm Beach.
Should I do them all, or do you mix them up?
How many we got? One more. Yeah, you can ma, make some of that the new planner's job.
Yeah. Do all these get handed to the applicant, or the, or you keep all those? Okay.
Microfiche.
Okay, so I think we're ready for the next application, right? So Sharon, would you like to read 112 Waterline Drive-In, please?
112 Waterline Drive South, owner Stephen and Tina Manarino, request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a second-floor addition to a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district in Little Neck Bay Cluster Subdivision, map 125, parcel 145, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Mary Ann and Dave.
What's your name, please?
Stephen Manarino from 112 Waterline Drive South.
Nice to meet you.
Meet you too. Um, here this evening for written finding 174-17 for the proposed construction of a second-floor addition to the existing structure. Construction will stay within the existing footprint, and no, and none of the existing setbacks will be changed. Therefore, we won't be creating any new non-conformities to this lot. Conservation has approved a new four-bedroom IA system. Four new roof drywells will be installed and all downspouts will be connected. Structural engineer has inspected the existing footings, foundation walls, and the existing structure and has found them adequate to support the additional load. ARC has reviewed the plans and approved it and believes it fits well with the, with the neighborhood. I think that's all I have now, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One second, if you would, so George, do we have any comments from the town in reference to letters?
Is the existing house non, not conforming now, is that why he's here?
Uh, not sure, let's just, while we read the letters in the last-
Board of Health comments, 112 Waterline Drive South. Board of Health needs septic design for four bedrooms with IA technology. Conservation comments, 112 Waterline Drive South. The commission approved this project at the February 15, 2024 public meeting, subject to the conditions of lawn standards under regulation 31, parentheses nitrogen loading and lawn standards, and a parentheses, any reestablished lawn areas must comply with regulatory standards under regulation 31.
So basically, you're just putting a second story on.
Exactly, taking the roof off and then a 12, basically a 12 pitch going on top of that.
One thing, John, do we have any other, I just wanna make sure we're all done with letters.
I don't see anything.
Okay, good. Sorry, Jonathan. We all set? Mary Ann, there's no other letters? Go ahead, Jonathan, I'm sorry.
No, no, that was it.
Scott, I was wondering if there was a height.
Well, so I think there's gonna be several questions in this application, so you're staying within the existing footprint, correct?
Correct.
So you're going up in the existing footprint?
Correct.
I don't think it matters to this board, I think it's certainly up to David in reference to the structural engineer, that has nothing to do with us, right? That would be, you'd have to satisfy that gentleman after our left, right, my left. So where is, so if it's staying within the same footprint, there's not gonna be any change to lot coverage then?
That's correct.
You're not adding anything to the lot that's outside of that footprint, am I correct?
No, we're not, the only thing we're doing for the conservation is taking some of the patio outfits and approaching on other properties.
Okay, so you're not adding any, anything whatsoever to that footprint, okay? And I see the, I don't see the plan of the AI system, not that it's a big deal, I guess, to me, it's not really within our purview.
I believe you, you should have, uh-
And again, I'm not so worried about that, that's a Board of Health issue. You have conservation approval?
Yes.
How about roof drainage? You're going up?
We have, we have drywells, four drywells being installed.
Roof is just going up another story, whether it's changing in the pitch, it doesn't matter to me, it's roughly the same size, correct, that roof?
Correct.
So he's not increasing impervious material, so whatever's going on in this house right now, in this lot, is gonna continue being the same, as far as runoff. And whatever you put in for drainage is gonna improve the situation.
That is correct. Currently, there's no drywall.
Right, so the fact that he's putting forward, and I'm not gonna question the fact, and by the way, I did not have the, the proposed, I only had the existing, and that's why I said about the AI system. So the fact that you have four drywells will certainly improve the situation better than it is today.
That is correct.
So are you enclosing the lanai room?
That is, yes, the lanai, currently that is a wooden structure, just a, a deck. So that will become, there'll be a piece of foundation put in and that will become enclosed in.
And that's becoming the corner of the house to go up?
That's correct.
That's the same square footage that's there now, the deck, this, new, new foundation's the exact same size.
Same exact size.
So it looks like you had to pull out the patio there that, off the deck, there was a patio, is that correct?
The patio's still there, there's a piece of it that has to be removed that's on the town property, over by the boat ramp.
Got it, looks, I see it goes over the line.
That's correct.
So I think there was a patio maybe in here that they had to take off.
So they're pulling out, pulling out this part?
Yeah.
'Cause it went over the line.
I get it, yep, understood.
Scott, how are we on height?
Height's fine.
Height's fine, I'm talking.
Yeah, I think we're 27.
Bedrooms, I'm, yeah, well, the only thing I'm a little confused by, which, I don't know why Board of Health can pick it up, this game room slash storage, that's gonna be finished space?
I don't, I don't believe it's gonna be finished, you know, originally, but eventually it will be finished.
It's got a, it's, it's got the description of a, of a bedroom, it's got a door, doesn't have a clear opening, so, Dave, would you call that a bedroom?
I just went through this.
I don't have it in front of me, Scott. I'll just show you.
How come you do?
Is it unfinished?
It doesn't say, it just says game room storage. So you got three bedrooms downstairs, you got a bedroom there, the office is fine, you got a door, and this space.
The, the health department may, uh, they may, they may want to open that up.
Open it up, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a game room, it's gonna be probably pool table, and without a door, it becomes, you know, noisy.
Yeah, but the way Board of Health looks at it, they want a clear opening, not just take the door off. And you don't have this, you might have to do like a half wall or something at that stairway, that's what we're having to do.
Do we have a letter from the Board of Health?
It doesn't say, it just says that they need a septic design for a four-bedroom house, and an AI system.
Well, I presume he's gonna look at the plan a little bit closer, uh, what, condition it?
It's not a zoning issue, but I know it's gonna come up.
So maybe we just condition it, if you were asked to make a motion, George, maybe condition on the approval by Board of Health that the bedroom count is correct for the se, for the system, please?
I agree. This is unfinished storage, everything.
Well, if it says unfinished, you just condition as unfinished. I mean, if this was gonna be an unfinished space, you can, you could condition as unfinished space, but if they wanna finish it, there are ways to do it. You just have to follow the Board of Health rules.
This is not, is this an existing system, that's a new system?
The septic?
Yes.
New.
Not AI, though?
AI.
It is AI, so where am I seeing, I don't see any depiction of what type of system it is, other than it's proposed SIS or absorption system, unit surrounded by, you know, doesn't say-
Says proposed septic tank to compartment with studge hammer model S.
Oh, there you go, where did you see that?
On the, you don't see that note?
Oh, way over in the right, he draws a line and puts a, proposed septic tank to compartment with sludge hammer, all right, model S, okay, that's fine, all set.
I think what you're missing, there's probably some pages behind that.
Yeah, I mean, usually you see a detail and a, and a cross-section, it's not there. And he makes the note like, wait, but that's all right, it's up to him.
Seek and find. Seek and find, sometimes in this claim, you gotta look for stuff.
All right, um, let's continue down the checklist here, if I may, um, David, do you have any input on this?
Yeah, um, there is a, there's, I'm looking at the engineer's assessment for the foundation, and she does point out that, um, the, the full basement is subject to the 50% rule, so there's no guarantee, um, you know, the permit will be issued until, until whether we determine whether it's 50% or, or not, it's saying that, so there's, you know, the basement may be subject to review. In the basement, do you have the mechanicals down there right now? And it's not a walkout, okay, so we'll go over that, it, it, just, the board should not be worried about that, it's building code stuff, but, um, again, that's, that's subject to that, and we're gonna have to document that well.
Does the house fall, is the remodel following the 50% rules?
Yeah.
That's what, that's the contention, but, you know, but again, we have to look at that stuff, we look at it.
Okay, audience participation, anybody in the audience have anything to say about this application? Okay. Any other board questions?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, George, you got clarity in reference to a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for 112 Waterline Drive South, owner Stephen and Tina Manarino, request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction for a second-floor addition for a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in R-3 zoning district in Little Neck Bay Cluster Subdivision, map 25, parcel 145, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions of a written finding under Mass. law 40A, section 6. Number two, site plan, proposed septic system, site plan 112 Waterline South, Mash- Number two, site plan, proposed septic system, site plan 112 Waterline South, Mashpee, Mass, prepared for Steven Manarino. Scale one equals 20, date 10/11/23, plan revision 4/5/24, 1/29/24, and 10/27/23. Prepared by Engineering Works Incorporated, stamped and signed by Peter McEntree, Civil Engineer, number 35109, date 4/5/24. Number three, building plans prepared for Steven Manarino, dated 1/11/2022, scale 1.4 equals 1. Job number 23D2-01, checked by PGP, PGB, prepared by Asher Architectural Services. Example, dash 1, proposed elevations A-1H, proposed elevations A-H. Foundation plan A-3H, first floor plan and schedules A-4H, second floor plan, roof plan A-5H. Building sections F-1H, first floor framing plan F-2H, second floor framing plan. Number four, conditioned on all department comments read into the record, including, not limited to the Conservation Committee, Department, and the Board of Health. Number five, the board finds that under Section 174-17 of the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to the, either the town or to the neighborhood. There is sufficient parking and there are no new conformities to be created. Number six, the Board of Health to review existing plans to confirm that the four-bedroom plan, that the house, that the, that the building, that the structure is four bedrooms. Number seven, basement to be reviewed, basement plans to be reviewed by the building, building director.
I'll make a second. I'll second it.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
No way. My opinion.
What?
There's no way he's ever getting a building permit. Back on the zoning, he's never getting a building permit. There's no way he's getting to the 50% rule without planning.
Don't be saying that.
None, none of these.
Don't be so negative.
My opinion. You see the, you see the, the plans?
I, I looked at them again, again. You know, we have to look at that.
Oh, yeah, he, he'll submit.
I'm currently under one where the building permit is denied, so it's not guaranteed.
Oh, there's zoning wise, he's fine. He's fine with zoning. He's had to get to FEMA. I don't see him getting to FEMA. That's just my opinion. If he does, then he had to rethink about some of my progress.
Hey, be nice, Scott. You know what I'm saying? You got to stop being nice.
I just know how tough FEMA is. You got to follow their rules. There is no.
You go by the rules.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to make that.
Oh, I know. You got to do what you got to do, but I don't, I don't think he had good guidance from his architect, is my opinion. That's just one man's opinion.
Well, it is what it is. We close the public hearing. It's over.
Zoning wise, he's fine. Fits the lot. He's good.
Are we all set?
Yes.
Okay. Sharon, would you read 1 Pontiac Road, please?
1 Pontiac Road. Owners Fernando and Eduardo Frias Carrero request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33. Setbacks from wetlands of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a nine-foot by 21-foot plunge pool on property located in the R3 zoning district, map 125, parcel 58, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Fernando and Eduardo Carrero, owners of property located at 1 Pontiac Road. They are seeking a written finding for a pool project that is shown here. The reason we are before this board is because it is non-conforming as to one issue, the setback to wetlands, because this property is partially within the flood zone. So the house itself conforms to all of your setback requirements. The pool will conform to all of your setback requirements, other than the setback to wetland.
We can share.
Even with the reduction of the land subject to coastal storm flowage, the existing structure meets lot coverage. With the pool, we will continue to meet lot coverage. So even with the deduction, we are under your 20% in the R3 zoning district. So, um, again, because the lot size is 17,021 square feet. However, with the deduction of land subject to coastal storm flowage, we're at 11, 11,080 square feet. The existing structure is 1966, which is 17.9. With the pool, 2175, it will be at 19.6. So there's, we will continue to be conforming as to that aspect. The project was approved by the Conservation Commission. You know, pretty straightforward. We're not creating any new non-conformities. We're not, there are no other non-conformities, other than the setback to wetland. This pool is in all lawn area, pre-disturbed lawn area. It's within fenced-in area. Pretty straightforward. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
They're in the flood zone.
It's 100% of it.
Um, not really. You're out here.
Is the shed existing?
100% of the house.
The shed is existing, yes.
Zone X.
And so is the pool.
The pool would be.
What does conservation say on this? So does that have to be elevated?
I don't know. So the pool is in zone 10X, right?
Correct. It is outside the flood zone, however, it's within 50 feet because AE 11 is the front of the lot.
This way flood, that way flood. Look, see, it is. That 11 feet here. So it's right in.
So zone 10 is outside the flood zone. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, so.
The house is outside.
Yeah, so everything in the middle of the lot.
It's amazing. Look, it's really strange how that flood zone line works, isn't it? When you think about it.
Right around both sides.
That's amazing.
Wow, like bookends.
I would say, I would have thought for sure it would like be going.
It's strange. I mean, but if you look, if you stand on, you know, if you stand at the front of this house, I mean, you're looking at a, a road from here. I mean, you would never know it's a flood zone.
Yeah.
You know, given the development in that area.
It is not.
Right.
Yeah, that's really strange.
But as I say, it is within 50 feet. So that's why we have to come before this board.
They're here. Here's the water.
Yeah.
This is, um, is the town landing road. And that's what, Little River? Is that Little River? I think it is. Got it.
So was the drought. Well, I don't want to go. Do we have any letters to be read into the record? George?
What? Pontiac? I saw any for Pontiac, no.
I have conservation. The commission approved the project at their April 4th, 2024 meeting. The proposed pool and patio areas lie just outside the 100-year flood plan in areas currently occupied by law and a few native trees. No proposed fill other than regarding the regrading of excavated material or significant alterations of the existing topography. As such, the project was deemed to not result in any adverse impacts of the 100-year flood plan.
Any other letters that need to be read into the record?
I have Board of Health.
Great. Would you read it, Scott, please?
Sure. Private pool, no comment. Yeah, you got to read it.
Okay. Any other, nothing? Is that it?
My other question is the same as the last pool. How are they getting rid of the water?
They're going to put it into the drywall?
Well, it does say the drywall is noted as for maintenance purposes to lower. It would go into the drywall. I mean, we're not near the water, so this property isn't on the water. So you wouldn't be dumping water into the, into the, into Little Neck Bay. You know, we're about 10 houses, you know, you're multiple, you know.
Little, it's where, where you got one.
So they actually depict the NDS, which is the drywall, with a discharge access inlet, which is right next to the proposed pool. So we can associate the two and say they're discharging it into the ground.
Discharge access inlet, either through top or side.
So I guess there's no problem dumping there.
I would presume that things are now.
Well, again, you, you, it says drywall note.
Yeah, I was just going to read that.
Yeah.
Drywall note. A drywall, a drywells shall be installed and used for lowering pool water level for maintenance purpose. Chlorination shall be stopped at least two days before discharging pool water into the drywall.
Okay.
You're going to stand there and make sure that happens?
I will not.
You can certainly make a condition.
But we'll make it a condition.
Yeah, did David show up?
I get it.
That's good. At least they look at it.
Exactly. So let's keep moving. Board questions? Letters were done. Mr. Morris, you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Audience input. Anybody in the audience? Yes, ma'am. Could you come up to the microphone, please? State your name and your association and/or address.
Donna Snyder, 83 Neshobe Road. My lot line runs right along theirs. And I just wanted to know, what's the difference between a plunge pool and a regular pool?
Size. It's just a small pool.
It's nine by 21.
But it's probably only four feet deep.
So it's the depth?
I believe so. I thought we started.
You don't want to plunge into a four-foot deep.
They usually come in one piece. They usually come in a concrete.
Why don't you just drop in and pull out?
My septic system is right on the other side of the fence and we had to deal with the, move things and put them in a certain place because of the.
Say that again, please?
My septic system is right on the other side of the.
You're lot 91?
83 Neshobe.
So I'm just looking, I want to make sure that I get where you, so that's lot 91. So where's lot 83?
On the next, the street behind it.
So you're right behind it, so.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. You're on Neshobe.
And we're on Great River and we're, they're about four houses back from the river.
So are you a direct abutter to this parcel?
Yes.
And your lot number again?
Separated by the road.
What number, Neshobe?
83 Neshobe Road.
I can't see it.
It's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's this one here. I think that's 83.
But that's not, so that would be right over here.
I just want some information.
Those abutting lots on that plan are in, um, Pontiac. She's on Neshobe. So I don't think it shows.
Yeah.
It has to, because it shows every single abutting property.
This one is.
It's like a triangle.
A triangle one.
Where?
Yeah.
Right here.
So that would be.
Oh, that's 57.
No.
Lot 57, I think you are.
I, I'm on the town, um, landing road.
Okay.
And their fence line runs.
Yeah, I see it.
The side of my lot. Okay.
So which one is she?
Right here.
So you're lot 93.
So the pool would be on the other side of the fence.
So that'd be that piece way.
Yeah, you're lot 57 is what you are.
Okay.
So could you say again, you had to move or do something?
No, we just, it, we had to determine where we put our septic system based on the rules of the wetlands and that kind of thing.
Yes.
So, and, and that's fine. I was just wondering if they do, um, where does the water go? If they drain the pool?
So the way this plan depicts it, there is a drywall there that they have to stop using the chlorine so many days before, which is what? At least two days. And they can then lower that pool by pumping it into that drywall, which then would disperse into the ground.
Okay.
Do you want to see on the plan where that drywall is compared to your lot?
That's right.
I'll show you. I think this is your, your lot.
Yeah, that's me. Okay, and my septic system is right here?
That's not the lot.
Oh, sorry, oh, is it my?
I'm really showing you.
I'm surprised that lot wasn't that far back. Okay. And, um, so would that affect my, you don't think so? Okay.
I can honestly say this. I don't believe so, but remember, we are all giving our time and effort to this board and we're not engineers, architects. We just.
We're volunteers.
That's all we do. And for me to sit, to any one of us to sit here and say, no, it won't. I don't think you're going to get that from anybody.
Great.
But we don't think so.
All right, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else in the audience? Okay. All right, so audience participation. Anybody else? Board questions?
Nope.
Okay. Oh, should we close the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Shut up. Wait till I finish the motion.
So George, you were able to make a motion on this, please?
Motion for 1 Pontiac Road. Owners Fernando and Eduardo Frias Carrero request a written finding under Section 174-17 and 174-33, setback from wetlands of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a nine-by-21-foot plunge pool on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 125, parcel 58, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass Law 48, Section 6. Number two, site plan drawing title, proposed pool plan, prepared for Fernando and Eduardo Sierra, 1 Pontiac Road. Mashpee, Mass. Project 1 Pontiac Road, Mashpee, Mass. Sheet 1 of 1, date February 5th, 2024. Prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, scale 1 equals 20 feet. Stamped and signed by Matthew C. Costa, number 52282, and Royal Lazardi Rivera, number 46845. Conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including, not limited to, the Conservation Department and the Board of Health. Any changes to the plans that would require the applicant to return to this board? Board finds under Section 174-17 and Section 174-33 that the new pool will not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood over what currently exists and will not be setback any closer to the wetland than what currently exists. Number six, that the chlorine will be ceased two days prior to the pool being emptied into the drywall proposed.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One's getting continued. Yeah, this is, so, got it from Kevin. Amy Brown.
Oh, my God. Oh, yeah.
Safe 15 minutes.
There you go. So Chris, I don't, don't present yet. I just want to let you know that you're only going to have four, right?
I'm okay with four on this one.
Do you need to stamp this one? I'm not ready yet.
I know. I said, I said to Chris, do not present yet, or Sharon's going to get upset at me.
I'm the new Mary Ann.
There you are. I can't get away. Is that it? Only two? Perfect. All right, Sharon, would you read, first of all, the next application will be, four will be sitting, the three full-time members and one associate, George? Is that okay with you, Counselor?
That's okay with me.
Okay. That being said, Sharon, would you read 37 Nick into the, into the.
37 Nick Trail. Owners Brian J. and Karen F. Kelleher request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of two second-floor dormers to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on property located in R3 zoning district in the Papanaeza Overlay District, map 117, parcel 300, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chair, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Brian Kelleher. As the public hearing notice stated, we are here seeking a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 to add two second-floor dormers to this property. I know the board probably may remember 37 Nick Trail from a previous filing that I made. But in this case, as the board may recall, we are non-conforming as to flood, uh, lot area. The lot is completely within the flood zone, so our lot coverage is 100%. We are non-conforming as to the setback to wetland because we're totally within the flood zone. Also, the front yard setback to Nick Trail is non-conforming. And the front yard setback to Uncle Henry's is non-conforming. So those are your non-conformities. What we are proposing is pretty much the same what you heard earlier on 112 Waterline. We are proposing second-floor dormers, which will not impact any of the setbacks. What we are proposing is pretty much the same what you heard earlier on one twelve water line. We are proposing second-floor dormers, which will not impact any of the setbacks or lot coverage. They are totally within the footprint of the existing structure. So we're not changing anything in that regard. So setbacks are not increasing. Lot coverage is not increasing. We are simply adding second-floor dormers to the existing structure, which is, you know, all pre-existing, so...
So just for clarity, very similar to the previous application?
Yes.
There is no change to virtually anything other than the fact that you're adding dormers to an existing home?
That is correct. There's no change to lot covers. There's no change to footprint. There's no change to setbacks.
Yes, nothing.
Again, but because we are pre-existing, non-conforming, and the additions will technically continue to be non-conforming, would you come before this board for a written finding?
Understood. Okay. Any agency letters, George?
Yes, this is the... Should I get the right one here? Conservation Department comments, thirty-seven Nick Trail. This project has provided administrative approval by the conservation staff on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is deemed to not result in any adverse impacts to the hundred-year floodplain. Conditions of admin approval include restoration of any altered areas from construction impacts, usage of equipment, staging, et cetera, to previous existing conditions, and providing a written notice to the Conservation Department of work commencement and completion. Board of Health, thirty-seven Nick Trail. Board of Health to remain a three-bedroom home.
Is that the extent, Mary Ann? Do you know? Just two letters?
Yeah.
That's all. All right. As long as it was approved. You want to just want to look at the administrative approval by Drew, conservation-wise? If you do, there you go. So, do we have any board questions?
No, the plan looks nice. Did a nice job depliquing the open areas and three bedrooms and...
Great. Sharon?
No.
Okay. Question? David?
I have no issues.
Okay. Audience input. Anybody in the audience like to speak about this application? No one? Okay. Again, I'll go back to board questions in reference to this application, thirty-seven Nick. Anybody on the board? I mean...
No, this is it.
Okay.
Pretty cut and drawn, this one.
Yeah. All right, so at this point, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second? All who are in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mary Ann, I did state, yeah, I stated who was sitting, right, early on? George, are you prepared to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for thirty-seven Nick Trail. Owners Brian J. and Karen F. Kelleher request a written finding under Section one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws allow for construction of a second-floor dormers to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in an R-three zoning district in the Papanesid overlay district, map one seventeen, parcel three hundred, Mashpee Mass with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Law forty-eight, section six. Number two, site plan prepared for Brian and Karen Kelleher, thirty-seven Nick Trail, Mashpee Mass, project Lot five, Uncle Henry's Road, and Lot six, thirty-seven Nick Trail, sheet number one of one, date March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, scale one equals ten, stamped and signed by Matthew C. Costa, number five-two-two-eight-two, professional land surveyor. Number three, dormer designer plans prepared for Kelleher residence, thirty-seven Nick Trail, Mashpee Mass. Plan date three fifteen twenty-one, revisions two nineteen twenty-four, scale one-four equals one, prepared for drawing, prepared and drawn by designs by S.P.B.A. one, proposed front, left, right, and rear elevations, proposed second-floor dormers S-one, existing first and second-floor layout and roof framing plan. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will be required, will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, the board finds under Section one seventy-four dash seventeen that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure or used to either the town or to the neighborhood, and there is sufficient parking, and that there are no new, new non-conformities being created.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All who are in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
I need a site plan for the dormers.
Lot?
I gotta look at a site plan for the dormers.
That's true.
There you go, sir.
You're out again?
Yeah.
Here we go.
Okay. More paper, I guess. You can mess junk.
Okay. Sharon, would you read eighty-four Punkhorn Point Road into the record, please?
Eighty-four Punkhorn Point Road. Owners Robert Allen Wolpe and Michelle A. Wolpe request a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen and one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of two additions in a detached pool cabana on property located in an R-three zoning district, map one hundred, parcel five, Mashpee Mass.
Mr. Chair.
So I just say who's sitting, so it's going to be the three regular members and one associate, George?
So this one, I would ask for a continuance for a full board.
Okay. So at this point, so you're asking for a continuance until?
June twelfth.
Is that okay? Or you mean...
Well, I mean, I have to do this because there isn't a full board, so...
No, I get it. So it's up to you. Your call. Pressure, don't...
Do you want to make it two weeks later?
Well, you're canceling that meeting on top of it.
Yeah, we're canceling the end of the second meeting in June.
So then it goes to July.
First meeting in July?
I prefer next, the next one.
Well, how many are already on the agenda for the twelfth?
I got eight.
Oh, eight. Yeah, that's not good.
You're killing this man.
Well, I mean, again...
Give me the first in July.
But again, I'm having to be required to do this because you don't have a full board.
Yes, but I'm not going to put a lot of, I'm not going to put pressure on my secretary. And she's, she's already, our secretary, sorry. So with eight already on the agenda? Are some of those eight yours? Why don't you just remove one of the others? Come on, will ya?
Most of them are.
Work with me here.
I don't know what the other ones are on that one. I mean...
I mean, if you're gonna, you may be asked for an extension on something else and that, you might want to give us a little clue now, and that way it removes some pressure from her.
Well, if you can...
Let's spend a moment on this.
See what, what's on that agenda. Well, I know you have sixty-one Shoestring Bay, which is a new structure, which has been approved by Conservation, so that would, that would be going forward on the twelfth. You have Three Elliott, which is dormers and a deck, so, you know, that's going to take, hopefully, a short amount of time.
One never knows.
One never knows, but I don't think it's dissimilar to some of the projects that we've had, so that one really shouldn't be ultra-controversial. Three Elliott.
Yeah, the remand's going to take a while, because I spent hours on that, and I...
I am going to be here for the remand.
The remand has to get straightened out that night.
Yeah, I will be here for the remand as well.
No, I think it's going to be good. It's just...
Is that the one over by the golf course?
That is correct. And I'm hoping that it's been settled, and every, all sides seem to, but I can't go down that discussion at this point, but...
What else? There's one other one, I think? Can we just table it to the after, and then Mary Ann can double-check?
I just don't want her under a lot of pressure, that's all.
Oh, I understand that.
To make the decision.
I would just hate, you know, as I said, you know...
I get it. I just don't want to load it up to the degree that we're under a lot of pressure, to the degree that Mary Ann... Say again on that?
Miss Pat wants to read, wants to write the remand.
Well, we have, we have, yeah, we have that written.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have that all done. That's, that's easy enough. I think the remand, from a, from a reading standpoint, won't be a problem. From a discussion, it's going to have to be discussed. I don't know how long that's going to take. And I have to fill the board. I've already filled the board in in consecutive session, but I have to go into depth a little bit more. So that's going to take some time.
What's the date of the first one in July?
Work with us. July tenth would be great. You'll, it'll be fine.
I told my client June twelfth, so he might not be happy with me, but...
He'll be all right.
He, blind man on us.
That's right. All right, great. July, July tenth, is it? All right, so can I get a motion to accept the...
Unless you don't want to cancel your June twenty-six meeting.
No, we're canceling that. I already, I can guarantee you we're canceling that. Yeah, so would someone make a motion to accept the applicant's attorney's, Chris Carain's, request for an extension on eighty-four Punkhorn Point Road till July twelfth, was it?
Ten.
All right, I make the motion as he said.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
All who are in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that's that. Somebody get Scott, please.
I'll go get Scott.
Whew.
And it continues on and on.
All right, so we don't have any paperwork. That's good. Let's go right to, well, you have the document to sign for the extension, right? It's a surprise, isn't it? So now you got to prepare it. This is one of the things, remember, I went over with you, Mary Ann, the surprise extensions?
I was starting, were ya?
No, Costello wants, our town council wants all extensions in writing now. And so this is an extension we didn't think, and then now she has to figure that out.
Circumstances required. Continue.
Exactly.
Do you need to go downstairs?
Need more information?
Have you, do you have any, is...
Do you want a recess?
Amy Brown or Lakewood Drive yours?
Both of them are.
Both of them, all right. Well...
Do you need a five-minute recess?
Amy Brown's being continued.
All right, why don't we go to Amy Brown next? And so do you have that prepared, that information to continue? All right, so, all right. Sharon, would you read thirty-seven Amy Brown?
Thirty-seven Amy Brown Road. Owners Brian W. Anderson request a special permit under one seventy-four dash seventeen point one, one seventy-four dash seventeen, and one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family structure and replace it with a new, single-family residential structure and a detached garage located in R-three zoning district, map one oh nine, parcel four, Mashpee Mass.
Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Carain for the applicant. I am requesting a continuance to July tenth on this one, as we need revised architectural plans.
Can I get a motion to accept the applicant's attorney's request for an extension till July tenth?
Second to that. I'll make that motion that you just...
You second? All who are in favor?
Aye.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
You're taking a what? Five-minute break?
Yes. Why don't we take a five-minute break so we can get on top of this? How's that?
What about the alarms? What about the police coming? Mommy going? Is it alarmed?
For nine things on the agenda, you're going to get out here pretty reasonably.
Whatever, whatever town you're in.
I heard.
He must be a very proud individual right now with the...
He is.
Hey, nice. Do you have brothers and sisters?
I do. I have a brother and a sister.
Oh, nice.
Both younger. So my brother has three kids, a boy and two girls, and my sister doesn't have any. So now I have four.
Nice.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Why did you want four girls, I hear?
Four girls. All girls.
And the last one's named after his father.
Mark and Tony.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what I said to him too.
Every time I have another kid, it's ten more years of work.
You know, girls fight.
They what? They take care of their fathers when their fathers are old, I heard.
That's true. Oh, really? Is that how that works?
So true.
That's a fact.
Girls are bull work.
Really?
Mm-hmm. You don't have one in middle school yet, do you?
No, I...
Oh, wait till that happens.
High school is worse?
Middle school and high, middle school's the worst.
School's the worst.
Two girls.
Middle school is the absolute worst.
Why don't they get to high school? They don't talk to you anyway, so it's not...
They looked at me cross-eyed. Right? I was looking, and their eye went that way, and they don't like me, and...
Whipperwill. That's the other one on June tenth. Got one on Whipperwill.
Did she say what? We had eight applications?
She said eight, but I have, I only have three.
Oh, I'm, yeah, maybe someone else has a couple. I'm sorry!
Could be.
You hear he's astounded. Oh, my God, I don't have them all! Wow!
I know.
You don't want to be on the town planner selection committee, Ron?
Again?
I think you should be on the town planner selection committee.
Going to justify that second-floor addition.
I renovate you.
I don't want to do anything with selection committees.
You can only, FEMA, if you're in a flood zone...
But Dave, yeah, my daughter, every building, she presents to the ZB.
FEMA says you can only renovate fifty percent of the value of the house.
Not the building.
You weren't at that meeting at Papanesid when FEMA presented. FEMA, they were there when they presented, Papanesid.
She's the town planner.
Well, she, she's a city planner. There's about ten of them.
You can only renovate three hundred and fifty dollars. You think you're putting that second floor?
This would be small potatoes to her.
That's a million-dollar renovation. You have to gut the first floor to put this in.
But yeah, then... She, she reviews all building plans.
So who works over there?
Setbacks. She even counts rooms and the whole nine, yes.
This project for this amount of money.
She, she had an issue with an elevator in a residence.
Can you lie about it?
So that wouldn't, you wouldn't think that was the town planner. She...
You got to hide to say you're going to do that for thirty...
In her expertise is...
That question was asked, you're not getting by that because the town...
Because she knows the federal and state laws.
Tell you, and then...
He can ask for, I want to see a spreadsheet. The lumber alone's going to cost two hundred grand. The windows, the lumbas and windows could be two hundred grand.
That no.
We have nothing to do with docks.
And you have to get, to do with...
She has to do, they, every dock ends up on her desk.
Electrically, you have to homewind everything now.
Docks are painted around.
It's terrible, probably.
It's a million-dollar project. No way around it.
If you're reviewing docks.
Look at that guy going.
Look, West Palm Beach has millions of docks.
Well, that's why the guy submitted, that's why the guy submitted himself. He doesn't want to get too deep into it. Engineers and architects, because he's probably...
His architect should have known. He shouldn't have gone...
Yeah, but his architect probably told him, and then he sat there and said, "Well, reduce my costs."
There was framing plans on there.
Literally, everybody that she went to college with had a dual major in both urban and environmental planning. So that's why I thought that that would...
Of course, in good shape, Jenny.
Oh, in this drainage issue. If you look for someone with a, I'm sure you're going to be on the selection committee. No, but you can look at their degrees and their resumes.
End of July.
I want to see all the numbers.
And that's most of the, like, she actually started out before she became the urban planner. She started out for environmental science. She wanted to... And then she realized she liked that.
That's what she said to the realist, Papanesid. She said exactly that.
She don't want anything to do with tree huggers anymore.
Well, it's been like that. It's like she's doing all of them.
Yeah.
No, she didn't back.
I don't think, like, Mary Ann's like, she can apply that. I was driving my bike, she's not coming back. I don't think, like, Mary Ann's like, she can apply that. I was driving, she's not coming back.
Tea time's been affected by all the cottages.
Even when she's like married and has four kids.
Has, does anyone know if there's been any bites on it?
You know, Mashpee's small potato.
Looking around at least. Oh, yeah. People have been like snooping around, like at the clubhouse and stuff?
So Chris, you're gonna go for five to try to get that boy?
No, all done.
Oh, okay.
No more.
You don't wanna try for that boy?
I'm not gonna try.
Your dad told me he was on, no?
When the summer's getting difficult.
An associate is working himself up?
Yes, he was. He was the, he was the chairman of that board in the late, late eighties, early nineties for a long time.
We were told that more than once.
How does he bite his tongue? He knows.
So when you wanna get a tea time, how far ahead can you book?
Lawyers like to see his face when they go to that board.
Seven days, that's it? And then we, is, in the play slow? Because of how crowded it is?
Well, it's eight minutes. Yeah, it's slow.
That doesn't mean they can play it. I mean, do they, do they tend to have rangers out there forcing people, forcing people along?
Nobody, nobody forces them.
Oh, Masters.
I hate slow play. I hate slow play. It's not the worst of slow play.
Well, I was, they all are, all mine.
There you go. Nice, okay.
I'll vote one.
That makes me feel a lot better, you know what I mean?
Four kids to feed.
Okay.
Whoa, double-sided. Remand, look at that.
We got the remand last, okay.
So he's, he's fulfilled his obligation to us, Mary Ann? He's signed both of them? You have everything signed, the extension-wise, from Chris? Perfect.
We need to sign it now.
All right, good. You wanna stop, Sharon? That? Because they stated that the, the special permit was valid. They alleged, the attorneys alleged that it was valid, and frankly, to a certain degree, they're correct. We get some. It's a long story, I'm gonna tell ya.
You know what, what's actually, Dave, this is actually funny about my daughter. We have to have, Drew is requiring an as-built plan for my landscape.
That's the extension, last one. She had to go draft it.
So I told my daughter we'd do an as, I had to do an as-built, I hate to like you, boo-boo. It's for the rotating wall we put in. Oh.
All right, we got them all?
All right, Sharon, would you please read one oh four Lakewood Drive into the record, please?
One oh four Lakewood Drive, petitioner's Mark Bannon requests a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one, and one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family structure and replace it with a new, single-family structure and an accessory stairway on property located in an R-three zoning district, groundwater protection overlay district, map twenty-eight, parcel one sixty-four, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, John J. Masters and Deborah A. Masters.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Christopher Karain. I am representing the applicant of this project, who is Mark Bannon. He purchased this property, and so, this is his project to raise and rebuild a existing, single-family dwelling and replace it with a new, single-family dwelling for property. I just wanna note, this is in the R-five zoning district. I think the, the hearing notice said R-three, but it's the R-five. So I just wanna make sure we're clear on that. Not that it changes much, other than the lot area. Lot area requirement is eighty thousand square feet in the, the R-five zoning district. We do have a pre-existing, non-conforming structure in a couple fat, a couple areas itself. The existing structure is non-conforming as to the northerly side setback at seven point four feet. The existing structure is also non-conforming as to the rear yard setback at eight point six feet. The existing structure is also non-conforming as to your setback to wetlands. There is a state inland bank down here, and this structure is obviously within fifty feet of that inland bank. The structure, the lot itself is non-conforming. Again, R-five requires eighty thousand square feet. When you remove or deduct a right-of-way and you deduct the wetlands, the, the lot size is eleven thousand five hundred and eight feet. The existing dwelling, based on that eleven thousand five oh eight, has a lot coverage calculation of seven point five percent. So, I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to go see this lot and where this house is, but we have a pretty dilapidated structure that is sitting on an inland bank that is basically falling into, falling into the pond. I, I did provide pictures to the board with my written presentation. So I think this project is really doing a lot of good things. We are gonna be removing this structure. We're moving it out of the resource area, up off the inland bank, onto flat ground. We are gonna be eliminating all the non-conformities. So your side yard setback will become conforming, your rear yard setback will become conforming, your side and front will continue to be conforming. Our setback to wetland will be non-conforming as to the stairway, but obviously that stairway is a benefit because it is providing access down the inland bank and not as to destroy the resource area. You'll also see this green that will be naturally revegetated to provide stabilization to the bank. And also, with the, it is a, it is a larger structure, however, the lot coverage with that lot, that increase to size is seventeen point one percent. So that will be under the maximum allowed in the zoning district. The R-five has a maximum lot coverage of twenty percent. So, again, the non-conformities as to the rear and side are being eliminated. We're not creating any new non-conformities. There's plenty of parking. We are meeting lot coverage requirements, and, you know, again, I do, I do think Conservation has approved this project. I do think that this really is a, a much better situation than what exists, given the, the condition of the structure that exists and the location of the structure on the inland bank. So, you know, with that, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, I do, I do think we really have a project that this board can say is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, given the, the existing structure. The only other thing I would note is, is that, you know, I know a lot of times we see IA systems proposed with these raise and rebuilds. In this particular case, this is in your phase-two sewer, so the Board of Health allows the applicant to file for a variance, to put in a standard system until they get the sewer hookup. And with the vote that I took cap in last time, you know, this project is gonna go forward under the phase-two. So with that, I'm happy to answer any of the board's questions.
Well, why don't we start with letters, agencies? George, please?
Yep, from the Conservation Department, one oh four Lakewood Drive. The commission approved this project after April fourth, two thousand twenty-four public meeting. The removal of the existing home from the inland bank associated with the Mashpee Pond, restoration, restoration plantings in place for altered areas of the bank were determined to provide significant environmental benefit to the site. Proposed new home footprint to include improved stormwater runoff capture and advanced, eh, eh, well, advanced IA septic system and/or potential hookup to sewer infrastructure in the next available phase of sewer, based on Board of Health requirements. Board of Health, one oh four Lakewood Drive. Board of Health, four bedroom septic is designed. House is in phase-two of the sewer plan. Need to receive variance from local Board Health regulations of Title V regulations for proposed conventional septic system.
Anything else you know, Mary Ann? Just those two?
I think DPW.
DPW, George, you know? You see that?
DPW, one oh four Lakewood Drive. Let's see. Lakewood Drive is a town-owned road. Any modifications to the existing driveway will require DP approval by the DPW. Signed Catherine Laurent, Director.
So George, if you were asked to make a motion, oh, yes, we certainly do. Why don't you read this other letter into the record too?
Twenty-three Melissa, do you have that?
I'll read it in. From twenty-three Melissa Ave, Mashpee, Mass.
Oh, are you? I'm sorry.
May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, to the zoning board. I'm writing to voice my opinion in favor of the raise and replace at one oh four Lakewood. I feel the plan will be an improvement for the neighborhood. Updating the septic and removing invasive weeds needs to be done. As in a butter, I vote in favor. Barbara B. Nichols.
George, if you were asked to make a motion, if you could make sure that it states something to the effect that it's subject to satisfaction of Board of Health and DPW, please. Including but not limited to those two?
Yep.
Okay, board questions?
I have a question. It says on here, lot size and area calculations, says eleven five oh eight, plus or minus, excluding right-of-way. Where's the right-of-way?
I believe it's up.
Is it highlighted on here anywhere?
I don't know if it shows on this. I believe it's up here.
So on the right-of-way is, it's not going, the right-of-way's not going through the house or anything, right?
No, it's not.
Okay. To the pond, you mean?
No, to the road.
Okay. Shouldn't it be listed on here where the right-of-way is?
It would be good, because we would really like to know whether it's impacting the actual construction of the dwelling or the occupancy of the dwelling, right, from a CBA standpoint?
Yeah, I'm surprised that he doesn't have the.
Uh, 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 wait a second. Twenty-foot wide, right-of-way, overgrown. It's right here, goes right through there. See right here? Right there. Twenty-foot wide, right-of-way, overgrown. So, I'm thinking it's these lines. Whoa, this is tough.
Yeah, but it kinda.
I see the.
Is it curved to the?
Yeah, I see the verbiage, but it's hard to see where the damn thing is. Oh, I think, I'm guessing it's right here. Here it is, right-of-way. So it's right here, right there, goes through here.
Draw the line.
And goes through there. That's a twenty, see, right-of-way, process of being rescinded. So here's the question. Piggyback on his, his question, Counselor. It says it's in the process of being rescinded. What are you doing? Going, is this land court, this property?
Uh, no, it is not.
So taking out a right-of-way isn't the easiest thing in the world?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not doing it.
Ah, better than done that. That's terrible.
Right, yeah. I, I, but again, I don't know that it.
Well, it's, it looks like it's about a foot off the front of the house.
Good luck. Are these the potential?
I don't know, I was gonna get to them.
There are butters.
Yeah, I was gonna go to the board first, but there it is, I think, right there. Do you see where the right-of-way is now, Chris? I'm depicting it as.
Two sets of dotted lines.
Yeah, and it says, yeah, I think we've got it.
I mean, it would make sense.
It says.
And this is on the other side of the.
Yeah, so it says right-of-way being rescinded, and there's dotted lines here, and then it says twenty-foot right-of-way. But that's more, I think there's another right-of-way maybe in here, 'cause that's more than twenty feet.
But that would make sense.
Yeah.
So.
But again, there's no structure in that, in that proposal.
Sheds come out.
No one uses it.
Well, as I've said in the past, I wanna use it. When I leave tonight, I'm gonna go to that lot, and I'm gonna drive down that right-of-way.
I don't think you'd get very far.
Well, I'm just saying.
I think you might run into their house.
I get it, but under the rights of like Pym's Road and so many other rights-of-way that existed in this community over the years, who knows? Who knows who has what rights?
Well, I mean, you could drive over it today, you could drive over it even with this house there. It's not on.
Well, but it says on the plan that it's gonna be rescinded.
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
It's your plan.
I know. I don't know, I don't, it's not, it's not relevant for zoning purposes.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, 'cause it's too close to the line.
That's kind, if it were in, you know, way down there, but it's, it's. One, one second, we're just gonna go to the board, and then we'll go to the audits. One second. Well, that's certainly something that's a question of the board, right? And certainly a question I have. I.
Yeah, I'd like to get more info.
I have dealt with right-of-ways in my life, and they are painted about. Yes, David?
They are the butters, so it does seem like the right-of-way runs into your prop.
Why don't we, go ahead, why don't you say, could you state your name and your address and?
Grab the mic.
Yes, please.
Sherry McLune in Fowler. Were the, I'm the trustee, my sister also is the trustee of twenty Melissa. My father, Charles, lives there now.
Which is where?
Twenty Melissa.
We don't know where it is on here.
That is, if you look at the map, it's on top of the property. That's us.
Gotcha.
So.
The, the original right-of-way, as I was growing up, his dad bought the property, was in front of the old structure.
Yeah.
So that, I think, is the biggest concern is.
It was taken, basically, in the development of the old Lakeview.
Right.
Root. I mean, it was there one year, gone from plan to next.
So, we just wanted to inform you where the old right-of-way was.
Yeah, see, as a, I've had to deal in my lifetime with a lot of right-of-ways, and they can become very problematic as to who has what right. David?
I've never heard the term rescinded, I heard abandoned.
Yeah, well, but the only way to rescind is to go to court. If it was land court, petition, petition, partition, there's a process, and I tell ya, they gotta notify everybody in the world, basically. It's not an easy way, it's not easy to get rid of a right-of-way.
And they may not do it, I mean.
Yeah, but how could you?
Just 'cause it's written on there doesn't mean anything.
I agree with you, but I don't know what that, how that.
Well, but we need to know as a board what the rights are of the right-of-way individuals. So that, and, and many right-of-ways, like I said to you, Pym's Road, years ago, when it wasn't improved, anybody in this town could drive down that dirt path.
Okay.
And anybody. And, and I was told by town council, thirty-five years ago, when I was blocking it, you gotta open it up, because anybody in this community can drive down it. I'm like, it's a dirt path. And that's just one issue. I can talk to you about many.
We had the same issue down on one fifty-one, where they put Sherwin-Williams. In between Sherwin-Williams and the liquor store is a.
Yeah, there's an actual lay, paper way, there's a paper road.
And they had to manage that building location so that it was the parking and everything else, because we, I, we said, hey, you can't even have a dumpster there, because somebody could say, possibly, move the dumpster, I wanna be able to go down my right-of-way.
Right. We treated, I mean, on, on Sherman Williams, we treated that as a, as a road.
Yes, I agree.
Right.
So, but what do you, so.
We don't have enough information.
But I, I don't understand, to what end? We're not building anything in the right-of-way.
But the setback is.
Let's say the right-of-way, as you know, you could go to some communities and argue that a right-of-way, you can put a house on a right-of-way if it meets certain criteria, even though it isn't paved.
Right.
So all of a sudden, somebody, there, there it is, somebody says, I wanna put another house down the street, and I'm gonna improve that right-of-way. Now you got a setback from the front yard of that house, one foot.
Okay, well, there's a proposed stone wall which goes right across the right-of-way.
There's a lot of dynamics that we need to understand.
The zoning board doesn't regulate right-of-ways.
No, we wrote, we, we regulate setbacks from structure, from roadways, et cetera. And if the right-of-way becomes a roadway, and then somebody states legally that it is a roadway, that means that your setbacks are incorrect. It should be one foot or something of that nature. Correct? Your front yard setback could be one foot.
Correct.
That's my point. Zoning, Z, Zoning Board of Appeals does deal with that issue.
That is correct.
That's my point.
Plus, you're putting in a stone wall across it.
Yeah.
Like, eliminate the stone wall pretty easily.
I, I don't think you're going very far on this one, Chris. Somehow, we've gotta get some settlement, and, and some comfort as to what can and cannot be done in that right-of-way.
I see some, some sketches, some sketches, but I don't know if it's, I'd like to see it more defined.
Okay.
I mean, I could, I don't wanna bore you, and I, I can talk to you for an hour or two about, and believe me, about what I've done on right-of-ways. and believe me, about what I've done on right-of-ways. And it's.
I'm not arguing that. I guess I'd be more concerned, I guess I'd understand the board would have more concern if we're citing the structure in the right-of-way, so we're.
Well, no, where the structure used to be, I'd have no concern about your right-of-way.
Yeah, but where the structure used to be is not a good situation.
I get it, but where you put the structure, I'm concerned about the right-of-way because if in fact it is a.
Looks like you're six inches to a foot.
Yeah.
Right-of-way.
Well, I mean, it's either put it in the right-of-way or move it back towards the resource.
Well, I don't think you want to put the structure in the right-of-way.
Well, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, but.
You know, your, your bank may sit there and say, wait a second. We're not lending money based on that theory.
I mean, I think we're running, now we're talking about, talking about title issues.
I, I think it's clear, how would the board like to proceed in this? I would like to move that we get some more clarification. Jonathan, what is your thinking?
Agreed.
Scott, what is your thinking?
I agree, because I'm concerned with Sharon just said that the septic is actually in that right-of-way.
And we don't know what the rights are of the abudders or anyone else. Sharon, what would you like to do?
I think continuance.
Okay, George.
Hard to say about the septic system. Generally speaking, that if people have rights-of-ways or they derelict few statute, you can put things in right-of-ways as long as it doesn't interfere with other people's rights, okay? So, a septic system isn't necessarily going to.
But what are those rights?
Well, it could be to pass and repass. That's probably all it is, is to pass and repass.
So, is the tank an H twenty tank? Because I'm going to drive over it with my truck. And then I got to go through it because it's not H twenty loaded because it's in the middle of my right-of-way.
Well, the other thing is they're going to be hooked up to sewer at some point.
Yeah, I get it, but between now and then, I'm driving there, like I said, tonight. But as soon as you finish the septic, I want to drive there. You're not going to win this one. You're not going to win it, I'm telling you. Forget it. I think where you're going with this is going to be a dead end if you choose to, to move forward on it, but that's up to you.
Well, I will give the board.
Would you like to ask for an extension?
I would like to do it. I'd like to do it to June twelve. I don't want to.
I don't think that.
It's definitely an H twenty though, because it's in the driveway.
Yeah, I didn't, I was just making that as a statement.
It is designed to be driven.
But I just.
I don't, I don't know the law well enough about right-of-ways, what they're.
I have built houses, I've built houses in the middle of the woods on a right-of-way. And a lot of people in Plymouth are still doing it on right-of-ways that are on dirt roads.
And zoning doesn't have an issue with it?
No, that's, it's because it's a paper street. That could be considered, if it's shown on the assessor's plan in there, it could be considered a paper way. And now, this town has certain zoning requirements, minimum fire, et cetera, et cetera. I've built houses where you're like, where's the road? It's right there, see the plan? That was years ago.
Can I make a motion to?
You built on the right-of-way?
No, you built the road, the right-of-way was considered a road. Now, if they do that here, the setback that he shows in his scale should be maybe one foot, front yard setback.
Maybe talk to the engineer, find out why he has that note about.
I mean, it would seem to me I'd go to the engineer and then I'd go to the, you know, a land, you know, a title attorney and see what the rights are of that. You might find that you can certify that there are no rights and you can get an engineer that says it's defunct or something. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I could certainly try to get some more information about the right-of-way.
I just, I don't know how we can agree to setbacks that you have on this plan with what's depicted on the plan.
Yeah, I'm just not going to look the other way. Understood. I mean, I'd really like to get this on June twelve, just to, you know, only because.
Well, I'm going to leave that, I think we need to leave that up to Mary Ann because she's the one that has to get ready and she's the one that puts up with all the aggravation.
I understand.
We just hear it. That's the easy side, right?
And the only reason I would say for this particular project, because other than the right-of-way issue, you know, there really isn't, you know, we're, put aside the front yard setback, I mean, we're eliminating non-conformities, you know.
It sounds to me, and I'm only speaking for myself, that if this right-of-way wasn't an issue, it would probably would have been not an issue.
Improving the site quite a bit.
Quite a bit.
It's just that.
Yeah.
So, that's all I'm saying.
And my only thing in my brain was ditto in reference to the site drainage. But that's easy. My point is, is this. We've.
But if that's the only issue, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's going to be a long session.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if he's going to be able to get the information that's going to satisfy us, that's going to say this right-of-way, no one has it, he writes over it, and here it is exactly.
Well, the fortunate thing is, is I actually should be able to get you that information relatively quick only because the property has recently changed hands. So, somebody's reviewed this title within the last thirty days.
Do you know what bank?
I don't know if it was cash or bank. But it was, there would be an attorney, I can ask the applicant, you know, for his attorney to provide.
But, but. I'm sitting there saying if there's a, if there's a house that far back where the house exists today and there's a right-of-way up where it is, even if it has passage rights, I wouldn't be concerned as a bank. Right, think about it, who cares?
Right.
But where you put in the new house changes the world in reference to that right-of-way.
Sure, but again, I think that, you know, as again, this property recently changed hands. There would have been an attorney who did a title search. So, I don't, I think I can get that information on time.
Well, let's hear from Mary Ann when she comes back about time. Yes, sir. Could you? No, just take your time, I don't. Take your time. And just say your name, please.
I'm Charles McLuhan.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet all of you. Is there any, is, is there any resolution to the right-of-way? I mean, can we just say, it doesn't, it doesn't matter?
We can't say that.
We can't, we're hoping that he's going to find that information.
The law has to say that.
Oh, if he can find a reason.
Yes.
If you, if, if, if you have, if you're the only one with the right of the right-of-way, you certainly can say that to this board, that you don't have any concerns about the project.
Well, but.
Tonight was the first time I saw that right-of-way.
We don't know who has rights to it.
No, I know, I know.
If he could sell the property tomorrow and.
Yeah, and more importantly, it needs some research. Really does.
It heads towards my house.
I'm sorry?
It heads right towards my house.
Yeah, I think you probably want to know too who has rights over it. There are right-of-ways, sir, that I've dealt with that I could, that anybody in this, in this country could drive down, even though there's trees there, they could take a chainsaw, cut the trees and drive their car down. Because it's a right-of-way for the general population.
You can't cut those trees down in this town.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, you pay the fee. You just pay the fee.
Not anymore.
All right, so we're waiting for Mary Ann.
My other thing is, again, the proposed storm wall height varies.
It's right in that right-of-way. If that's going to be a right-of-way, how can you have a stone wall there?
Well, again, I am, I don't think the stone wall is going to make or break this project, so.
No, I'm just saying if this right-of-way is legit. I'm hoping the engineer has something saying, no, we've got this.
I don't think it's an engineer's statement. I think it's a, it's a title examiner certification that says the right-of-ways' rights are as follows.
Yeah, my guess is, is that this land was owned by one owner at some point, probably before Melissa Way was built, and there was a right-of-way to be able to get to Lakewood. Now, you have rights on Melissa and nobody uses the right-of-way anymore. That would be, you know.
Years and years ago, it was a farm.
Right. So, that would probably be.
And I'm wondering, has, has anyone ever seen the assessor's plan and does it depict that right-of-way? Because it then becomes questionable paper road.
I could let you know.
Well, let's see.
That right-of-way might go right to your property too.
If it, if it's shown on the assessor's map, it could, it could be considered a paper road. Then the issue becomes even a little bit more wide. So, while we're waiting for Mary Ann, I guess we can have this conversation, but I think we're beating a dead horse.
There's an old plan of the land.
Does it show the right-of-way?
Can we see it?
So, Chris, if you could look that assessor's, that would be great. Because if it's shown on the assessor's plan.
It may not. This is nineteen fifty-eight.
Perfect.
That's, I, I wish it was nineteen twenty-two, actually. That's great.
Chris, you should get a copy of this.
I don't know if it's in there, I mean, my eyes aren't as good as they used to be. That's.
Yeah, so see this right here? That's a paper road right there. I'm not saying it's the same thing.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that, but people got to understand, that right there, if it's shown on an assessor's map and the assessor's, then I'd have a, I may have a right to just drive down that, even though it's in the middle of the woods. You got to watch those things. Paper roads can be very problematic.
You should show that to Attorney Corrine.
Yes.
Do you want to see it?
Um.
This is just an old layout of.
And where is the lot we're talking about right now, do you know?
I'm showing my lot.
This is ours.
Okay.
I'm located.
See that Jones Road? That's a paper road right there.
Yeah, but that's, that's not the one. I got to open it up where I can see it.
Nice that you have this.
Wow.
He hasn't thrown anything away.
Really? Lakewood, here's Lakewood.
Where's the lot we're dealing with?
One oh four.
It's one oh four. So, that's showing.
And that's us.
Yeah.
Oh, there we are, I'm right here.
So, there's no paper road.
Nothing there, not like this.
Right.
That's good.
But it's on that one.
There's no date, there's no nothing, there's just this Mashpee and.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's not. I think this is, Chris has got to do some work.
Anyways.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
I used to live, my aunt was of that whole.
These parts of.
There were, there were so many walking trails in the town of Mashpee. I had three or four of them in, in Southport. It took me two years to do away with them and they went right to the center of the job.
I know, I used to run up and down them as a kid.
Thank you, two years, two years. And you can still see them when you drive down some of the streets, they go through the woods and you can see a walking trail. They were put there like a hundred years ago.
They had names, you know.
It's crazy.